It is 6:30. I will call to order the Wednesday, March 20, 2024 Cedarburg School Board meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg as well as to the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have no recognitions tonight. That's unusual.
No.
So the consent agenda is next. Dr. Clark?
All right. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on February 21st, 2024, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everybody. This evening, we are seeking approval for two changes within our professional staff, seeking approval for the resignation of Mary Berger and then the approval for Ally Rudich, Allison Rudich, for our new Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There are none? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you for that. Ms. Ally Rudich is here in the audience, so if you would like to stand and just wave. Again, looking forward to working with you as Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Thank you.
All right. So the next up is the superintendent's report. Dr. Clark?
All right. This evening, we are, we have the pleasure of hearing from our middle school PLTW teacher, middle school principal, and some of the students in sixth grade PLTW. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dan Reiner, Principal of Webster Middle School.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Clark. Thank you for the opportunity for Webster to present and shine the spotlight on one of our elite arts courses and Project Lead the Way. It has been a pleasure for me to see the Project Lead the Way program flourish and grow from what was a traditional tech ed program and current class offering back in 2011 to shift towards a class with more robust focus on science, technology, engineering, and math skills that is now found in our Project Lead the Way curriculum. I am thrilled to introduce Project Lead the Way teacher, Sean Skipper, who will share an overview of what all sixth graders experience and hear directly from our students regarding what Project Way learnings they have had. Sean, I'll turn this over.
Thank you, School Board. I am Sean Skipper. I teach Project Lead the Way at Webster. So tonight, we're going to give an overview as well as the students about what sixth grade looks like in PLTW. So the course overview is on the board there. It says, "The exciting world of aerospace comes alive through our sixth grade curriculum." All sixth grade students, that's important. It's in bold because every student that comes through our building becomes engineers as they design, prototype, and test models to learn about science and flight, solve real-world aviation challenges. With this class, we focus on every sixth grader also going through the design and engineering process throughout our flight units. So unit number one here has to do with modeling. This is a very basic overview. This is a short one where students learn how to code. They use CAD software. They look at scaling items. They draw various sketches. And then they learn some of the basic tools of our 2D, 3D software. We focus on measurement with an end goal that students make a nameplate, which they send to the laser as a DXF file, and they get to walk home with a nameplate magnet. That's important for our first trip in, sorry, going a little ahead there, rocketry. This is our first one. So they take that coding knowledge from the previous unit, laying the foundation, but they also start this journey about the engineering process. So we start to have a problem. Hey, we're going to fly a rocket. What does this look like? We start to focus on the four forces of flight, specifically drag. How do we manipulate drag? The size, the shape of the fins. And then we start to mess around with ratios. The rocket body, does that matter to the size of your fins? So students take that knowledge after their research, and they develop a fin that they, after sketching several, that they want to put on their rocket. So you can see in the upper right-hand corner, a student there sketching out their fins from the skills that they learned in the modeling unit. So they're working on scaling there as well as basic measurement, and then also learning how to save that file again to the laser and improving their knowledge there. Once again, after that, they fly their rocket. We look and analyze, right? It's the engineering process. Hey, after we have this prototype, what went well? What didn't go well? And looking at everyone's in the class, how did yours perform? What would you do differently, right? Would you look at your drag? What about stability? So there are many questions that we can ask in that one. Then we go into our measurement unit, which we overview the ruler, which is an important skill because we go into basic blueprint reading. So we learn how to dimension products, but the big focus here is on the force of flight, of looking at thrust versus weight of the hot air balloon. So we look at density, the inside of your hot air balloon. How dense is that compared to the outside? How do you land a hot air balloon? Where you have to flip those? What's the science behind it? Students have to have that understanding when they build their prototype to the dimensions that we need to fly their prototype at the end. So we look at what went well in your prototype. Was your build smashed? Well, what about the inside of your hot air balloon? What about that density, right? So we look and critically think about some of those things in the engineering process. Next, we have gliders. So gliders, this is a great one because students build their glider actually in a simulator. So they're encountered with a problem of six seconds. Hey, guys, you need to build a glider that has six seconds. You need to fly for six seconds. We are constantly reading, and that's one thing that you'll find in PLTW is that research is super important to implement in your prototype and design. So students in upper right there, that's students' glider, that they were fine-tuning based on the research that they have learned for that day. So if they were learning about analyzing ratios about lift efficiency, what does lift efficiency mean? Oh, we need to make our wings bigger. Why do we need to make our wings bigger? Oh, okay, because there's a relationship between the size of our wings and flight. All right? So all of those things with stabilizer to wing ratio, students are analyzing to make sure that they have their glider flying at least six seconds. Also goes over measurement, so we start talking about different wing area, stabilizer area, things like that. And once they have their glider pretty fine-tuned in the simulation, the great thing is they can print off their blueprints. So you see a student there on the board where a student has printed his blueprint, and he is starting to physically build his prototype. And if done correctly, the prototype matches the one that is in the simulation. So as you can see, I tried to highlight what are some skills that we're building here in PLTW in sixth grade. Reading science informational text is extremely important. No matter what project we're doing, we're always trying to get that background knowledge of research first. It's important that we all have a common language of what we're going to be doing and have a common language of the science behind it. And that ties into mathematics with our scaling, our measurement, our ratios, the science concept. Every day, we're talking about the four forces of flight, but it's more than that. In that simulator, I should be able to ask any student, how do you manipulate those four forces of flight? How can we change weight in ours? How can we change, like, lift in ours? And they should be able to answer that based on their research. And then my favorite is I believe the technology is infused into critical thinking in our course. It gives that problem-solving, critical thinking, and the higher-level analysis that we need our students to be having. So if we're looking at going beyond and extending our opportunities, I'm going to turn it over to one of my students right now that I've had a privilege to work with, and he'll talk a little bit about what he's done to extend the program.
Hi. My name is Kayden Halliburton. I am a seventh grader at Webster, and last year, I took PLTW in sixth grade, and it taught me the basics of 3D designing and modeling and also how to use a laser cutter. Well, not really using it, but how to get stuff ready for it. And after taking this class, I realized that I truly enjoyed those types of modeling and just things that PLTW got me to do. And this class has inspired me to even extend my learning outside of the classroom. Because of my interest in the things PLTW has taught me, Mr. Skipper provided me the opportunity to assist in designing and creating the awards for this year's STEAM Fair. With Mr. Skipper's help, I worked on the awards both inside and outside of school. Over to the right of me are some of the designs we created. This one's for engineering. The one over there is for art and music. And then those are just some other ones. I also designed and printed other 3D-printed awards for the subcategories, which is the more colorful, non-wood ones. And I am very grateful for this class and Mr. Skipper's guidance because without it, I may have never discovered my passion for this type of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayden. So all the skills that I believe are strengthened in PLTW, everyone focuses on the engineering and design process. That's important. How do we work reading in there? How do we make kids critically think? How do we problem-solve? And every build, how do we reflect and analyze on what we just did? Even if it's a failure, it still can be a success. What does that look like? So that is kind of my goal in class every day is when we're going through things, all right, hey, are we thinking about possible problems? Are we understanding the problem we're trying to solve, which might lead to another problem? But are we really reflecting and analyzing on what we need to be doing in a deeper level? So what I'm going to do now is I believe I have some wonderful sixth grade students here that are going to kind of talk a little bit about some of our sixth grade projects.
Hi. My name is Landon Hameter. I am in sixth grade at Webster, and I'm going to be talking about the gliders and what it was like for a student as like me. This is what the gliders look like after they are finished. We use the simulation to create blueprints. We cut out those blueprints and then use those cutouts to build and create these. I learned specifically that, we learned about the four forces of flight, lift, weight, thrust, and drag. Overall, I really enjoyed learning about how to create and build these gliders.
Thank you.
Don't you want to fly it for us?
We can see if it goes for six seconds.
Hello. I'm Mahi Pato. I currently am in sixth grade, and I will be talking about the hot air balloon project. I learned a lot of skills while I was building and blueprinting my hot air balloon. Some of the things I learned was to measure many different parts of the hot air balloon. I need to measure all of the parts correctly so I could be able to finish the project. This is what the hot air balloon looked like when it was finished, and we would have to cut and measure all of these parts out, and then we have to glue them together to make sure there are no holes. My overall experience was good. I learned a lot of things like how to problem-solve, measure, and more. I also enjoyed learning about the history of hot air balloons. And all in all, I enjoyed the challenging and interesting things in this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll take any questions if there are any, either for myself or students.
I had some questions, if no other board members do. I'm curious what the material is for the hot air balloon.
Yeah, that's just basic tissue paper.
Tissue paper, okay.
Yep.
Awesome. And then you said that the minimum was six seconds. Is there an average for the gliders?
Yeah, so in the simulation, with my knowledge, six seconds seems to be where that bar is set for every student to be able to reach.
Okay.
I don't tell them this in the beginning, but I just kind of let them read a little and toy with it, self-exploration, but their glider also has to be what they call in-spec. So all those things I was talking about, like kids would be like, oh, I have an eight-second glider. I'm like, oh, that's great. Well, then I say, hey, everything we learned, you remember about the ratios and things? We need to go back and check that they kind of fit on our supplies. So after fine-tuning theirs and making it in-spec, six seems to kind of be that average of a good score that I've seen over my years.
And then, sorry, Kayden, I'm curious how much time you spent on the projects outside of school. They're amazing.
Okay. So for the wooden plaques, we, because I don't really have the type of paint and stuff I need at my house, I always just did it during the paw time during school, which was always super convenient because Mr. Skipper was always there. So if I ever had any questions, I could always just walk 20 feet to the left of me and ask him. But for the more colorful ones like this, actually, earlier in the year, I realized that 3D printing was like the coolest thing ever for me. So I brought it up with my dad for like a Christmas idea, and my dad was like, finally, the excuse I needed to get a 3D printer. So me and my dad got a 3D printer for Christmas, and I just used that to print them, but we, Mr. Skipper supplied the filaments and everything.
Got it.
So I just got to learn a lot about my printer as well, and it was fun to make them.
They're beautiful.
Thank you.
Very impressive glider.
I have to imagine, while it's fun creating everything, I'm sure the best day is when you get to actually try them to see what works, what doesn't work, you know, what flies, what doesn't fly, and then getting to take them home so you can keep it. That's pretty cool, too. It would be neat if we could get, you know, next time you're testing, a little video of some of the kids trying to fly stuff or, you know?
Or you can just come to my class, and you can make them, and then you can compete in the competition. I can set everyone up with an account, and we can make that happen. Because honestly, I have students from first semester. I leave it open year, all year. They're still playing it, trying to improve their time, even though they're not in my class, so.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the presentation, the update. Thank you, everyone, for showing us your projects. It's fantastic. When you were presenting the class, I was just thinking to myself, I wish I could take that class. It seems like just a fantastic opportunity and hands-on learning, problem-solving, and fun.
Thank you to the students for coming to this, and thank you for including them and for their families for attending, too.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And you're more than welcome to leave. You don't have to stay for the rest of the board meeting.
Good point. Okay. So next on our agenda is public comment, and I see nobody has signed up, but is there anyone who wishes to make public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will move to item six, recommendations. Dr. Clark?
All right. Recommendations. We have several of those this evening. The first recommendation is regarding a K-5 resource for ELA. We are looking for the board to approve the Amplify CKLA ELA resource for kindergarten through fifth grade. This is a resource that was discussed at curriculum committee and brought forward to the board for approval.
All right. So we was in the committee, this was the result of a very long project. It spanned how many years?
Yes, at least two years, right, Alan? Three years, three years, from research to investigating many different resources, and then earlier this year, piloting both Amplify and another resource at our kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yeah, we've had meetings at the committee level for those years, and I can tell you, Alan and your team, I really appreciate the work that everyone put into this and the interaction, the constant updates, and I just think that your team did a fantastic job of explaining and building this and then helping us to understand and to kind of work with what you're ultimately recommending. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve the Amplify curriculum for K-5.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion. So I brought up at the end of the last curriculum committee meeting some issues that I had with content. As far as Amplify itself goes, it's an amazing program. I think it's great. It's been proven in terms of its teaching methodologies. My concern is content. And I was on board with the content when I was under the impression that the company had been given approval by the National Indian Education Association on their content, which they claimed to have sought out. I learned days before the curriculum committee meeting that unfortunately, that was not true. The company lied. Calling my contacts at NIEA, they did confirm that, they made it very clear that there were many issues they found beyond just the scope of their review, that the history presented as well as other topics were very problematic, and that the company had promised to make things more appropriate when they redid the next version of their curriculum. Obviously, that has not been done yet. My concern is that in lessons in particular in units such as kindergarten, Knowledge Six and Knowledge Nine, Native Americans and Columbus and the Pilgrims, Grade One, For Sure, Knowledge Ten and Knowledge Eleven, I'm unsure of Knowledge Five, Early American Civilizations, because South America is not my specialty, but it would most likely need to be reviewed as well. Grade Two, Knowledge Five, War of 1812, and Knowledge Seven, Westward Expansion. Grade Three, Knowledge Eight, Native Americans, Regions and Cultures. Knowledge Nine, Early Explorers of North America, and Knowledge Ten, Colonial America. Grade Four, Knowledge Seven, American Revolution, and Grade Five, Native Americans. It's mostly okay, but it would need some alignment in order to be in compliance with Act 31. So my concern is that what is presented as content is not unbiased historical fact, which is what many school board members, including myself, want. We want unbiased historical fact with multiple viewpoints so that students are allowed to critically think for themselves. Unfortunately, this content does not adhere to that principle. Not only is it biased and historically inaccurate, it's opinion. It's clearly one-sided. I could spend quite some time going through all of the lessons. Several teachers brought to my attention some problematic issues with kindergarten and first grade lessons, mostly that, you know, historical inaccuracies, but also as well as the fact that most of those lessons read as Native Americans no longer exist. Sun Prairie School District just handled this issue about a week and a half ago. One of the things that Sun Prairie was struggling with is that they have had quite a few issues with racism and discrimination complaints being found against them, and they kind of have an eye on them by the state. A comment about Sun Prairie that was made could easily fit Cedarburg if you replace equity and race relations with Act 31 compliance. With all the negative publicity that Sun Prairie School District has had years ago, or a few years ago, they've been saying they care about equity, and they talked that they care about really race relations. And now is their opportunity to show us that it's not all talk. An anonymous Madison parent said, "I really hope they choose to act on their values because they say that's what they care about, but if they go ahead with this curriculum, it'll be very clear that they're all talk." Cedarburg claims that it's becoming compliant with Act 31, but to go on and approve problematic content just a year after being found guilty of noncompliance is not a good look, especially when the district is on the radar of the Department of Public Instruction, all 12 tribes in the state, and the tribal education departments and organizations like the Wisconsin Indian Education Association, which I serve as president of. We are already beginning conversations with tribal officers and politicians throughout the state to have these units struck from the approval for Act 20. Claim was made in the curriculum committee that my opinion is, that these are my opinion. I find that insulting. This is my content area. I'm a classically trained, multi-degree holding historian. I deal with historical facts. The last time my advice wasn't taken or warnings heated, the board wasted thousands of dollars on legal representation on a fight that I had been telling them they would not win for several years, which is the Act 31 noncompliance fight. A true example of an opinion is that the Shakespeare unit should be removed, which it was. Amplify CKLA encourages students to create costumes and learn drumming and dancing to create a powwow. It's extremely problematic and inappropriate. You know, let's basically just have them reenact a Christian church ceremony as an equivalent. Create a totem pole, okay, then recreate a family Bible, too. These aren't open practice events. Many of us could be jailed for holding powwows up until 1978. So to encourage young children to try to recreate these things without proper knowledge is unacceptable.
What lesson was that in? Because I looked at the Sun Prairie feedback as well, and they were complaining about the powwows.
That was in the Lenape.
In the kindergarten?
Lesson.
Yeah, I searched for the, I looked at the whole teacher's guide. I searched for the word powwow, costumes. That was, the feedback from Sun Prairie was given from a previous version, and that wasn't in our version.
Have them brainstorm ideas for their own feast and/or powwow. You may want to coordinate with music, physical education, and drama teachers. Solicit help from parents to create costumes and learn drumming and dancing. Invite others to join you in the celebration.
Well, let's do this.
I'm not finished. We have the opportunity to do this right this time and infuse the social studies curriculum the school is now mandated to cover in place of inappropriate and problematic content in Amplify to show that we are in fact actually trying to be compliant with Act 31 and that, as multiple board members have said, including about the world history textbook that we're looking to approve tonight, that we want unbiased historical fact being taught, not biased opinion.
Okay, thanks. So certainly, I think the conversation we had in the committee was that we don't want to violate Act 30, or Act 31, sorry. And I believe that we were going to, I think Dr. Clark could probably maybe get into this a little more detail, but when the curriculum is approved, then there's a scope and sequence, more the specifics of the instruction. There are processes that the curriculum group goes through to make sure they meet our standards, to make sure that, hopefully, to make sure they're compliant with whatever legislation applies. So I'm not sure that these issues are not addressed, so maybe I can...
My issue is that it was sent to the board as is, was the language that was used.
I guess I'd like to add, I mean, Act 20 is a statewide issue, and they're looking at reading curriculums because we're really, we do have a reading problem in this state, and we really, you know, are working on improving it. And DPI itself came out on January 31st of this year, doing, I have it in front of me, it was on the, you know, internet, of just a complete review of Amplify, you know, the second edition, 2022. And then on February 19th, they came out with, after reviewing multiple curriculums, 11 curriculums that they recommend to be used by school districts in Wisconsin and And DPI itself came out on January 31st of this year doing, I have it in front of me, it was on the, you know, internet, of just a complete review of Amplify, you know, the second edition, 2022. And then on February 19th, they came out with, after reviewing multiple curriculums, 11 curriculums that they recommend to be used by school districts in Wisconsin, and Amplify is one of those. So I, you know, they did an independent review and so that's what I'm going to say on that.
In terms of teaching, reading, reading curriculum, yeah, it's fantastic. It's great. I think we should use it. The issue is the content in some of the lessons, not the pedagogy and the teaching methodologies, which is what was approved by the state.
So Dr. Clark, have we looked at the compliance issue?
So one of the things that we do with all of our resources when we, when the board approves them, as was mentioned, is we'll go through a scope and sequence. And so we don't ever have the scope and sequence established prior to getting board approval on the resource, just because that takes a lot of time. And so one of the things that Alan and his group will be doing now, between now and the end of the school year, is establishing that scope and sequence, keeping in mind anything that is brought forward, produced from the state, from different areas, and then being able to produce that. In terms of Act 31, there are other resources that we use, resources that the board approved last year, in order to make sure that we're compliant with that and, you know, legislation was passed today, that changes Act 31 also. So again, I think that's probably at the, right now, what I can, what I can say is in terms of the process. So we're looking tonight to approve a resource, the scope and sequence, which really lays out then the curriculum that we'll be using is a process that will continue from now until we're ready to implement.
So I would be willing to vote, if the motion is amended, to include language that lessons regarding indigenous content will be reviewed and modified. I will not vote yes on as-is.
Well, we have a motion on the table already, correct?
We do, but she's, are you making a, are you proposing a motion?
I'm proposing a motion to approve Amplify CKLA with the intent that any content regarding Native Americans will be modified so that it is in line with Act 31 compliance.
Okay, does that motion have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion?
So do we have two motions? Because we already had a motion and a second.
Yeah, we have to deal with this one first and then we can go, then we go back to the
original, okay.
Yeah, the original, maybe.
I do have thoughts. I did put in a request for this item to be a bit further down in the agenda just because I thought it would have more discussion. I unfortunately was not able to get to the curriculum committee on time. I ran into Jaredin. That one ended a little sooner than I anticipated, but my intent was to share some of my concerns at that meeting in person. I do understand that we have the ELA frequently asked question document. I would hope that members of this board understand that everyone communicates differently. And it's, that particular document is not the easiest for me to navigate. I do want to say thank you to Alan for addressing each, where are you? Are you here?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for addressing the questions that I had and going ahead and putting them in that document so that board members could see that before this meeting. It was relatively short notice, but it was not questions that hadn't been on my mind, if that makes sense. So again, I think some of the areas where Sun Prairie, where there's quite a lot of media and complaints really, part of that is that transparency piece and parents feeling like they didn't see what was going on. And I don't feel like people could say that about Cedarburg. I think that our curriculum committee has been incredibly diligent insofar as asking a lot of questions. And to, to a degree, there are likely people in the community who think it is too much. However, in my opinion, it has afforded this space for, you know, one board member to be able to say and find out and verify, hey, you know what, no, this, what I was under the impression was actually happening isn't actually happening, right? So we're able to make a really informed decision on that one piece, the NIEA, correct? Yes. And I don't know if everyone remembers, but quite a while ago, back in December, I think it was, I specifically asked for the kindergarten resources for Amplify and what was the other one, Alan?
Front work.
Thank you so much, thank you. And between the two, I did prefer Amplify, but there were some areas where I wondered why it was considered okay, but it's not my area of expertise. We have a board member who, it is their area of expertise. And I, again, I really appreciate the effort that's taken in that curriculum committee. I think there's some really well-intentioned individuals, a lot of different ideas. And in my opinion, as this, the initial recommendation is written, it kind of makes space for that additions, exclusion, scope, and sequence, kind of. But I would prefer, and I think our community would respect and understand, that we include that language of Native American or indigenous content, because that really is still under, it's being looked at more and more. It's an area where we're constantly learning what should be part of curriculum for our youngest learners especially, and what are some things that maybe no, because it is harder to unlearn some things. So those are my opinions as I, as a parent, am reading through content for a kindergartner. I think that's, that is what my hope was in sharing at that curriculum committee. I didn't have the opportunity to do so. That is no one's fault other than my own for going to the U-ball game first, right? Like, that's not on any of you. And the questions and my comments are, were only in the doc today because of Alan's diligence. So it takes a lot of people working together, being understanding with one another, and that's why, in my opinion, this recommendation is, it's solid in one respect, but it can be better. And that area where it can be better is really acknowledging that indigenous piece, that Native American piece, the language that board member Erickson presented.
Thank you. Yeah, I personally, I'd like to stick, my preference would be to stick with our normal process, approve the curriculum, and then manage the scope and sequence like we always do. I think we could run into some issues just in the future with board members claiming or having a, an expertise in a certain area and then carving things out. I don't know that that's our, exactly our role. I think we're, I think we're handling, I think we're, I totally understand the bias thing. I see it a lot in historical documents that we look at, our historical books. And I think we have a very good scope and sequence that we, that is implemented, for example, in the social studies, that will, that will strain this and catch it and, I don't want to say Cedarburgize it, but, you know, make sure that it meets the standards. And those standards, our standards, are to present unbiased and to, unbiased information and to promote critical thinking, also to be compliant with state statutes. So all that's on the radar for sure, and actually not even on, just on the radar, it's built into the, what we're, what they're building, Alan and his team are building in the scope and sequence. So that's my, that's my point. I think we should just approve it.
I had some feedback to share, just to give a different perspective from what we've heard so far this evening, on a couple of different topics. So first of all, at the curriculum committee, Kate, you brought up the Cedarburg, excuse me, the Sun Prairie School District and how they're handling this. So I went back and watched pretty much the entire March 11th Sun Prairie School District meeting, which is a school in Dane County, that was their most recent full school board meeting. And they approved the Amplify CKLA curriculum on a vote of five to two at that, with a plan that in the next 30 days, that they would do a review of the content and figure out how they will handle some of the units. But they, their board has not had a formal meeting since they approved this curriculum on March 11th. I did some research on some of the public comment that was done at that meeting, and it's my understanding that some of the comments were based on the first version of Amplify CKLA. That is what Amplify CKLA has said as well regarding things like the costumes and the powwow. You read the quote about the powwow and the costumes? I've done a Ctrl F on the whole Native American unit for the kindergarten one. The word costume is not found in the teacher's guide for the Native American unit in the kindergarten one. So I'm not doubting the quote that you read, I'm saying I don't see it in the teacher's guide here for the Amplify CKLA. You mentioned that several teachers brought to your attention that this unit gives the impression that Native Americans no longer exist. Lesson eight of the Native American unit for kindergarten is called Native Americans Today. So I think that's pretty clear that the standpoint of Amplify CKLA is that Native Americans do exist today. And lastly, while I sincerely appreciate your focus and extensive knowledge on this topic, I will say that there is a difference of opinion on many of these topics. So for example, you spent a significant amount of time at the curriculum committee meeting saying that this curriculum was incorrect because it used the term bison and said, it did not use the term bison, it used the term buffalo repeatedly in the kindergarten unit and didn't use the term bison. And that was incorrect because bison are in Africa and, bison are in America and buffalo are in Africa, whatever, you know what I'm saying. I looked up different, some different Indian tribes and Native American tribes, excuse me, and Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. This was at their official website of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe in present day South Dakota, and they used only the term buffalo on their website to describe their history and their culture, and they didn't use the term bison at all. You know, Ken Burns, the famous PBS documentary guy, did a documentary last year called The American Buffalo, and he used that because it's kind of used interchangeably. These are kindergarten students. So I'm saying even on that topic, there's a difference of opinion on which word can be used, and it's kindergarten, it's just kind of setting a base. And I think that we have great Native American resources that we've brought into our fourth grade level that will really, you know, add on to what they're getting at these earlier grades. So that's my feedback on it.
I appreciate your feedback. My point in making that statement was that early on in the kindergarten lesson, they get things wrong consistently.
Well, that's your opinion. It's colloquial speak to use the term buffalo.
It is colonial, yes, it is colonized language to use buffalo. That is not what they are called.
Many Native American tribes also use the term buffalo. Just because you wouldn't use the term buffalo, doesn't mean that it's wrong for them to.
I have multiple master's degrees in this content specifically.
I'm aware, I'm just saying that you are not the only person with an opinion on this.
I am not giving my opinion. I am combed through this curriculum version I've been given and looked for historical immovable fact.
Okay, well, I'm saying as a board member, I'm okay with the term buffalo being used for kindergarteners in this grade level.
That was one example that I gave.
Okay, so there, so you see what...
This is my concern, is that if we do not have specific language to make sure it gets done, it's not going to.
Okay. So we, so this is Ms. Erickson's motion and Ms. Kincaid's second. We've had comment, so we're going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, that motion does not carry, fails three to two. That leaves us back to the original motion. Who made that one?
I did.
And that was to accept it as presented with the understanding that we are doing, that we being, not we, the board, but we, the curriculum group, is doing a, doing their work on the scope and sequence to make sure that, number one, we meet our standards, that kind of the general standards of, you know, being non-biased and age-appropriate, all those things that are built into that, and that we're, that we will ensure that we are compliant with legislation, including Act 31. So I get, is that, is that understood as part of your motion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And did you second that?
I did.
Okay. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Did someone say yes?
Yes, give me one minute. In my opinion, with the amount of time that this item has taken for educators, administrators, board members, I would greatly appreciate having a motion where everyone at the table is in agreement. We have five board members here, not seven. We have a curriculum committee that has individuals who, in my opinion, at this table, were able to share more than they were at the curriculum committee. I think it is false to state that anyone spent a length of time with their concerns at that particular meeting. So we do have a difference of opinion on that front at this table, and we have a different viewpoint on whether this language is sufficient as we look forward. I, as a board member, do not want to be responsible for saying yes for a motion for curriculum, the purchase of this materials, knowing that there are still aspects of this curriculum that are being really looked at a bunch. I understand that we have our Cedarburg, you know, the scope and sequence process, et cetera. I truly do understand that. I am disappointed in the nature of this conversation at the table this evening. I'm disappointed in the interruptions, and I, once again, feel really strongly that Ms. Erickson, what she's reminded us of, meaning the financial piece, the expertise that should be listened to at a curriculum committee was not in full and was interrupted several times, in my opinion, this evening. It really is unfortunate to me. I will not be voting yes to the motion as it is written, not because I don't think Amplify is better than other resources. I do feel it is better. I think there's agreement at this table of that, not because I don't think the educators took their time with this. I believe we all agree with that, and not because administration has not been incredibly diligent with each question that has come their way, and not because the community can't see what's been going on, because that is there. The frequently asked questions doc is available to anyone to read. So I think there's a lot of good that has come through this process, but the motion itself is not one where I am comfortable voting yes on without more specific language. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I would just like to add, I don't think we're doing, or the motion does anything outside of what we have always done and always do with curriculum. I also want to, I also, it's, I don't think it's fair to say that these concerns that Ms. Erickson raised are not being addressed or considered. I for one appreciate them, and I want to, I do want to make sure that we are compliant with the statute. And there's nothing in the motion, there's nothing in our policy, there's nothing in our process that is going to prevent that from happening. This is, we approved curriculum, then it goes to the, to the curriculum folks, they built the scope and sequence according to the guidelines that we all put together, and these, these items will be considered. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's fair to say that, that, that these concerns are being ignored.
I don't, I don't believe I stated that they're ignored, and if that's what was communicated, that's not my intent, Dave. In my opinion, this is discussion, it's not me saying, here's an amendment to this. It's something where, as a board member, my preference would be wording that says, if, where, addition slash excluded, exclusions, including but not limited to Native American or indigenous content. That is my preference. I feel it covers all the bases. It covers the work that board member Charlin did, it covers the questions that board member Strobel asked, the questions that board member Sivaji and Metzl, who are not here this evening, asked, the questions that I asked, the input that board member Erickson shared. So it is not my intent to, to say that, and, you know, that I feel anyone's been ignored. It's truly my preference, just have a motion where we all can agree. That's it.
All right. Any more discussion? Sure.
As Alan's coming up as chair, I just wanted to quickly add, for those who have been present at our curriculum committee meetings, that the board members, we have had access to this trial for months, I mean, since late 2023. Every board member has had access to review all of the content from Amplify CKLA, and for at least the last month, we've had a working... And for at least the last month, we've had a working Word document or Google document that Ellen has curated for us where any board member was allowed to send the questions to Ellen and have him and his team review it and get back to us for us to have a robust discussion at our curriculum committee meetings this week. And the concerns that we're talking about tonight were brought up just at the most recent curriculum committee meeting and were not in the Frequently Asked Questions document that we have been putting our questions in.
To respond to that, as I said earlier, I was under the impression that the National Indian Education Association had signed off on Amplify CKLA, which Amplify CKLA claims still on their website. And personally contacting my NIEA rep to find out that that was in fact a lie is why I went to look through absolutely every piece instead of trusting that endorsement and trusting what the curriculum team had come forward with already.
That's part of our role as board members is to review.
Well, it doesn't help that I'm not on the curriculum committee either. That is an issue. But it also was not a question for the question form. I didn't have a question, so.
So I think Ellen had some clarification here, so it's.
Well, I was gonna, what Elizabeth said, I agree with as well in light of the questions. So this FAQ is helpful for us as a system to be responsive to the board's participation in the curriculum committee of the board work, which I've thoroughly enjoyed. And I think it's just a compliment to the, the group for their dedication to roll up their sleeves, read the content, get engaged in the process. So those questions became incredibly important for us and the coaches to kind of really do our due diligence to answer them for you. So Kate, I don't have any specific questions from you from last Thursday, so I couldn't prepare anything for the team to, for me to answer. So that does leave us in an awkward position. So if there are specific items that you want to draw attention to, if you get those in question format to me, I'd be glad to get them answered. And I did as well look at the Sun Prairie board meeting. I did look, I did reach out to Amplify. They did make some corrections. And it is my understanding that, that they requested a public correction on some of the judgment that has been placed on them as a corporation. So some of the things like the, and then NIEA, they said they partnered in some of the content, but not the entire program. So as far, they had never claimed to have had them side by side, actually helping them to create the content, but only parts of it. And it was also drawn to my attention that the program that some of those participating in that board meeting actually was older content, an earlier addition of which they've made corrections since that time. So some of those things, sometimes you just, it's not really apparent to most of the public, like they're not looking at the additions and it's just things that get out there. But when they get out there on the airway and then into the news, now we have to all like dig in and like what's accurate and what's not. So just appreciate the questions. I'll be glad to get after that and answer those. And we put in the FAQ that we are intending to, as we discussed about the scope and sequence, we are intending to make those adjustments if and where needed. So we just need to know where that would occur.
And for transparency, is put them in the FAQ?
Of course, of course.
And I'm just looking at, you know, I have an email in front of me that that FAQ was, it was on February 23rd, so close to a month ago that that was established. And also in there, I believe you made the curriculum available to parents or to the public, correct?
Correct, yep. And that FAQ remained public to the, also, of course, to the whole board. So just keeping that all transparent. And again, I feel like we've gotten into a nice rhythm of open communication. When we get to the table here, I feel like you all know. So I've just grown to rely on those kinds of responsive questions to me so that I can answer them.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Like, like I mentioned at the start of this, I think we all have different communication styles. And for me, this document is not the easiest to open, to add things to. And for me, I have had concerns about the kindergarten text since December. However, I am not a, a member of the curriculum committee. I, my opportunity and my personal opinion is at the board table. Yes, I can email you. Yes, I can talk to Jared. And yes, I can go to the curriculum committee meetings, but it is to me different. So I, I, the NIEA piece is the big one for me. If I have concerns about something in December, but I'm under the impression that even if I have concerns about this, if an organization that deals with this all the time is saying, hey, this is okay, this is good, we're fine with it, then my opinions and how I feel, that's not it, right? If I learn in March, I don't remember, April, March recently, that this is not, not the case, that there's a difference of what's being presented and what actually is going on, to me, it makes sense to yes, ask those questions, but then for myself to look into it first. I also listen to the board meeting in Sun Prairie, et cetera, all that. I thought it was four to two and zero, not five to two. Maybe I'm wrong. It passed. Either way, right? Like, I understand everybody's going to do it differently. I feel at this point, I've shared my preference, but we have a, I have no, nothing else to say on that front.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we do have a, a motion and a second. So we'll vote on the motion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So the motion passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
All right, the next recommendation this evening is for a sixth through eighth grade resource for ELA. And our recommendation to the board is to approve the HMH into literature ELA resource for sixth through eighth grade.
Again, this is one where, it was at the curriculum committee, correct?
Correct.
It was, it was forwarded three, zero. Again, one of those situations where Ellen and his team, you moved. Put a, a ton of time and work into the, into the, the investigation and piloting of the resource and, and really appreciate all the communication and, and the collaboration that we have with you and your team. So I would entertain a motion on that one.
I will motion to approve the six to eight ELA resource.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, the next recommendation is for the AP Precalculus textbook, looking to have the, the board approve the Pearson's AP Edition Precalculus 11th Edition textbook for the AP Precalculus course. Again, this was discussed at the most recent curriculum committee meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the AP Precalculus textbook. I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, our next recommendation is for AP World History textbook, one titled World Civilizations. And so looking for the board to approve the Pearson World Civilizations textbook for the AP World History course.
I will motion to approve the AP World History textbook for World Civilizations. I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, then we have the 2024-25 Audiological Services Agreement, looking for a recommendation for the board to approve the 2024-25 Audiological Services Agreement with Gateway Audiology LLC. Gateway is our current provider and we are very pleased with their service. The current agreement allows for us for services to be provided at a rate of $150 an hour. The new agreement would have it at $154 an hour.
This is, oh, sorry, just, yeah, current one. I'll, I'll motion.
I will second.
All right, the motion is to approve it, I would assume?
I apologize, yes.
Just making sure.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, the next one is for 2024-25 Visual Impairment, Deaf and Hard of Hearing and Orientation and Mobility Services Agreement, looking for a recommendation for the board to approve the VI DHH and ONM Services Agreement with HI Educators LLC. HI Educators is our current provider. The current agreement has us paying a rate of $92 an hour, and that would stay the same in the new agreement.
And everyone's happy with them?
Yes, and we're very pleased with them.
Okay, good.
I motion that we approve the said agreement.
I will second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Looks like motion carries unanimously. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, the next recommendation is for an Office Copier Lease Renewal, looking for the board to recommend a five-year extension to the Office Copier Lease Agreement with Vantage Financial and James Imaging as presented. James Imaging is our current office copier provider and we are pleased with their service. The current agreement has monthly costs at $13,979. The new agreement would be at $16,039. And that's monthly cost.
And Ben, this is still the, the best deal, right?
That was my question to her, Ms. Charlin.
Sitting back there trying to.
Yes, we did, and we did discuss this at the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Oh, okay, good.
We grilled him.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Any motions on this one?
I'll reluctantly motion for approval.
I will reluctantly second.
Okay, we have a reluctant motion and a reluctant second. Any discussion?
Thank you for trying to grill and see if there's anything better that could be done.
Yeah, it's, I wasn't at the PNF meeting, but I'm, I'm assuming that you put a lot of work into it, Ben, so thank you.
Grill's not the best word, but I know you know what I mean. Thank you.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, our final recommendations are to recommend to the board to approve the following donations to the district. There's $5,807.14 from the Thorson PTO to be used to support the Story Strolls project at Thorson, $1,500 from the CEF, also to support the Story Strolls, and $281.10 from the Ozaki County Retired Educators Association to support Story Strolls. We talked about Story Strolls at the last curriculum committee, too, to make sure everybody understood what that was about. We also have a donation of $3,965.10 from the Westlon PTO to purchase two picnic tables, and then a $2,500 donation from the RCB Group Incorporated to purchase a portable baseball pitching mound for the Cedarburg High School baseball program. If the board approves those donations...
Should have another slide. What did they do? Oh, no, no, wrong way?
No, no.
There was one more slide. Must've got cut off. Anyway, I don't remember what exactly what it was. Yes, we, we get a total donation for March of $15,553.14, and then on the year, $73,652.14.
Nice. Generous community. Must be very nice picnic tables.
They are robust. They will last.
Yeah. Can you imagine?
I'll make a motion to accept the donations with a quick note of just a tiny typo for the word story in the, in the paragraph for number three.
Got it.
I will second. With the notation that there's a spelling error in number three.
No, I don't think that's a part of it, just a quick.
Where's the spelling? Oh, wait.
I don't think it's in this one. I think it's in the document.
Oh, in the document. Oh, got it, okay. All right, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, we have recommendations for this evening.
All right, committee reports, Personnel and Finance Committee, Laura Strobel.
I am filling in for Kate Netzel, whose son is at a, he's moved on up a level for the history project, so that's really exciting. It was a, you know, very informative PNF meeting. We started off with a presentation from Baird on school finance and fund balance overview. It was very, there was a lot of learning that went in, that we got out of that. We discussed the 24-25 budget, and it's just a note, the ELA new purchases were not in that budget. We discussed the Right Way renewal agreement. I think we're looking at two years, but, okay. And then the Office Copier Lease Renewal, we already passed here. And then the next meeting will be May 1st, 2024. All are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Laura. Curriculum committee meeting.
Yes, we met March 14th, and we recommended full board approval for the AP Precal textbook, which we approved today. Likewise, for the AP World History textbook, which we approved. New, at the high school, there's going to be a grade nine through 11 English resource trial for this coming fall that Ellen let us know about. And next, we recommended board approval for both Amplify CKLA and Into Literature, which were approved this evening. And finally, Principal Angela Little from Thorson gave us some information on the Story Strolls that we approved during the donations. And our next meeting is April 11th of this year.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Building and Grounds Committee, Connie Kincaid.
All right, so there are six agenda items. The Parkview Playground, there, sorry, let me give a shout out to Rick Radke for his first meeting as Buildings and Grounds Director, correct? Great job, Rick. So for the Parkview Playground, there's a goal set for Parkview of $120,000 for fundraising for a ADA compliant playground. There was a quick update on that, as well as some mention of a potential, potential parts of redesign. That's all works in progress. Parking lots, repair, there's, there were options presented for immediate fixes, as well as a mention of larger scale plans for the future. Feel free to correct me if I'm getting that wording incorrect. The CHS translucent panels are slated for installation by the end of summer. The Webster HVAC units are up for installation in the summer, starting in June. The roofing, there was a roofing status update with potential costs for several different options. For the summer project list, Rick gave some projects that he, he is planning on, including fixing a door at Thorson that needs some, a great deal of attention, some cracked ceiling, and then there were all, and painting. And there were requests from committee members to also work on getting estimates for projects that were brought to their attention. I think I got it all. Thank you again, Rick.
Do you have a next, a next meeting set?
I don't have a note for that. Do you remember, Jared?
We do. I think it's, it's first part of June, it may even be June 1st.
It's posted on the district website.
Yes, posted on the district website, yes, thank you.
There you go, there you go.
All right, thank you, Connie.
Sure thing.
All right, at that, I am to the point of the meeting where I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, Dave, can I just go back and say that June 5th is the next?
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Have a motion to adjourn and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? None. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.